The fifteenth day of the twentieth Congress, fifth regular session of the twentieth Congress will now come to order. May we all rise for a moment of silent prayer. Roll call, Chief Kirk.
Senator Alec, Senator Aratos, Senator Figuerre, Senator Cullent, Florida Harper, Senator Conman, Vice Speaker Moses, Senator Ned, Senator Perman, Senator Panuelo.
Amen.
Senator Orsman, Senator Romolo, Senator Welly, Speaker Semina. Mrs. Speaker, eleven members are present.
Ten. Ten members are present this morning. We have quorum to transact business. Florida Harper.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I move to dispense with the reading of the journal.
It's move and seconded that we dispense with the reading of the journal. Those in favor say yes, opposed no. Motion carried. We now dispense with the reading of the journal. Next item, Chief Kirk.
Short recess, Mr. Speaker.
Short recess, subject to call of the chair. Congress is back in session. Next item, Chief Kirk.
Item number five, presidential communications, receipt of numbers twenty dash three hundred thirty-five through number twenty dash three hundred forty.
Okay, we have two, those communications, two of them are nominations. Assign those, Chief Kirk. Next item.
Item six, FSM Supreme Court communications, none, Mrs. Speaker.
Sir Speaker, a point of privilege.
Stay at your point, Chairman Panuelo.
Speaker, good morning to you and good morning to all members, staff, and citizens who are observing from the gallery. Speaker, if you allow me to introduce a friend of Pompe's delegation who's here. I'll introduce him on all our behalf. We have a councilman from the Kitchi Municipal Government Council, Isokonadi. The Honorable Richard Abraham, who's observing our session, and he's the chairman of the Cheyenne Co. Committee. Can we please welcome him and give him a round of applause? Thank you.
Thank you. Continue, interesting enough.
Yes, and also let's welcome Petrus Baltasar, who's from the president's office, and always punctual and consistent in observing our session on behalf of the president's office. So welcome our good friend, Petrus. Thank you, Speaker.
Thank you, Chairman Panuelo. Those two gentlemen officials are indeed welcome to observe our session any time. Okay, next item, Chief Kirk.
Item seven, member communications, there are none, Mrs. Speaker.
Next item.
Item eight, departmental communications, none. Item nine, agency or governmental authority communications, and receipt of number twenty dash fifty-six and twenty dash fifty-seven.
Okay.
Item ten, state communications, there are none. Item eleven, state Supreme Court communications, none. Item twelve, municipal or town communications, there are none, Mrs. Speaker. And item thirteen, foreign government communications, also none.
Okay. Order of the day, standing committee reports. First report.
Mrs. Speaker, we have one report, and it's standing committee report number twenty dash ninety-nine on functional bill number twenty dash two forty-six regarding the seven percent increase from your committee on Cheyenne Co. for adoption.
Chairman Romo.
Differe on a, defer action on the said report to the next session of Congress?
It's move and seconded that standing committee report number twenty dash ninety-nine be deferred to the next session of Congress. Those in favor of that motion say yes. Opposed, no. Motion carried. Standing committee report number twenty dash ninety-nine is deferred to the next session of Congress. Next report.
There are none, Mrs. Speaker.
Next item.
Item fifteen, special committee reports, there are none.
Next item.
Item sixteen, assignment of measures and communications. We have a referral sheet number twenty dash eighty-eight.
Okay, chairman members, take a look at that for your planning purposes. Next item.
Item seventeen, unfinished business, none, Mrs. Speaker.
Okay, next item, Mr. Speaker, counter. Next, Mr. Speaker, Chief Kirk.
Mrs. Speaker, we have CP number twenty dash two hundred forty-nine CD one for second reading. CP number twenty dash two hundred forty-nine CD one. It's a bill for an act to appropriate the sum of fourteen million dollars from the General Fund of the Federated States of Micronesia for the fiscal year ending September thirty, two thousand nineteen, for the purpose of funding priority infrastructure projects and other projects and programs in the states of Yap, Kosai, Pompe, and Chuk, and for other purposes.
Okay. Florida Harper.
Short recess.
Short recess, subject to call of the chair. Congress is back in session. We're on bill number two forty-nine CD one. Florida Harper.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. First of all, I'd like to thank you for my being the acting chairman of voice and means. Mr. Speaker, I move that this Congress pass on second and final reading, CP number twenty dash two forty-nine.
Second. It's move and seconded that Congress pass on second and final reading, CP number twenty dash two forty-nine CD one. Discussion. Chairman, Chairman Orsman. You have the floor.
Yeah, thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Continuing on the spirit of our session last Friday, I defer, I yield the floor to Chairman Panuelo.
Okay, Chairman Panuelo, you have the floor.
Okay, thank you, and I thank the chairman of E. We did some amendments, and I think the lawyer just made me sign, be the signatory of the amendments here. So Speaker, on all our behalf, the delegations, I wish to draw your attention to floor amendment CP, to CP number twenty dash two forty-nine CD one, offered by myself, and this is on the amendment to two, twenty-two forty-nine. So move for the adoption of amendments. Thank you, Speaker.
It's move and seconded that the offer for amendment by Chairman Panuelo to CP number twenty dash two forty-nine CD one be adopted, and because of its length, we will dispense with its reading. And Florida Harper.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I move to suspend any relevant rule that may impede our action on the amendment.
Second. Move and seconded that any relevant rules, specifically that rules prohibiting substantive amendment on second and final reading be suspended. Those in favor of that motion say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, no. Motion carried. The relevant rules are now suspended. This point, okay, there is that motion which was seconded. Discussion.
Speaker, just to, just to say that the purpose of the amendments is to specify the use of a lot of funds under this act for Yap, Kosai, Chuk, and Pompe. Thank you.
Thank you for the explanation. As you may note from your packets on the, there is a file on four amendments. There was, there is one that was supposed to be introduced by Chairman Orsman, and the date is
Speaker.
September twenty-eighth. I understand that's been disregarded, so the record should reflect that. We're now working on that, the amendment that just been moved and seconded for adoption.
Short recess, please.
Short recess, subject to call of the chair. Congress is back in session. We're still on discussion of the offer for amendments by Chairman Panuelo. Any further discussion? Yes, Florida Harper.
I don't bring my eyeglasses. I cannot really read all the amendments offered by Panuelo, but I'm only hoping that my amendment, which was reflected in Orsman's amendment originally, is also included in here.
Okay, Chairman Orsman or Chairman Panuelo? Can you help out? He didn't bring his glasses, so short recess, subject to call of the chair. Congress is back in session. We're still on discussion of the offer for amendments to CB twenty dash two forty-nine CD one. Any further discussion?
Mr. Speaker.
Vice Speaker Moses.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I wish to make an oral amendment on the offered amendment by Chairman Panuelo.
Proceed.
And it's on page four, item number eight, where it says, "Mayor of U Municipal Government." Please strike out "mayor" and put down "chief minister." And two lines below that, "Mayor of Nech Municipal Government." Please put down "district administrator of Nech Municipal Government." I so move.
Second. It's move and seconded that the offer for amendments by Vice Speaker Moses to the proposed for amendment by Chairman Orsman, I mean Chairman Panuelo, to twenty dash two forty-nine CD one be adopted. Any discussion on the offered oral amendments? Short recess. Short recess. Congress is back in session. We're still on the offered oral amendments by Vice Speaker Moses. Can you please restate your, and clarify your motion?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. On page four, item number eight, the second one should be renumbered nine, and the bottom nine should be renumbered ten. And then where it says, "Mayor of Mattilini Municipal Government," it should be Luke and Melap of the Mattilini Municipal Government. Oh, Menin Gatarlalabala, I'm sorry. Menin Gatarlalabala of the Mattilini Municipal Government. And then two lines below where it says, "Mayor of U," please strike out "mayor" and insert "chief minister." And a couple lines down where it says, "Mayor of Nech," please strike out "mayor" and insert "district administrator." And then several lines down where it says, "Mayor of Kitchi Municipal Government," please strike out "mayor" and insert Luke and Melap. Couple lines down where it says, "Mayor of Sukas Municipal Government," it should, please strike out "mayor" and insert "chief magistrate." And then where it says, "Mayor of Mukilla Municipal Government," please strike out "mayor" and insert "chief magistrate." And several lines down where it says, "Mayor of Sapwafi," it should be Sapwafik, and please strike out "mayor" and insert Luke and Kolu. And then where it says, "Mayor of Kapinga Marang Municipal Government," please strike out "mayor" and insert "chief magistrate." I so move, Mr. Speaker.
Second. It's move and seconded that the offer oral amendments by Vice Speaker Moses to the offered for amendments to CB twenty dash two forty-nine CD one by Chairman Panuelo be adopted. The relevant rules are still suspended. Discussion of those offered oral amendments. If none, there is no objection. Discussion is closed on the offered oral amendments. Let's vote. Those in favor of adoption of the offered oral amendments by Vice Speaker Moses say yes. Opposed, no. Motion carried. We now have the offered for amendments to CB twenty-two forty-nine CD one as amended. Any further discussion on the offered for amendments as amended? Any? If none, there is no objection. Discussion is closed, so let's vote. Those in favor of the offered for amendments to CB twenty dash two forty-nine CD one as amended, offered by Chairman Panuelo, say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, no. Motion carried. The offered oral amendments to CB twenty dash two forty-nine CD one as amended, offered by Chairman Panuelo, are now adopted. We have CT two. We now, on a discussion of CT two. Any further discussion? Questions we call for? If there is no objection, discussion is closed. So let's vote by roll call of delegations. Senator Conman will cast a vote for Chuk. Oh, I mean, I'm sorry, Chairman is here. Yeah, sorry, he was. Okay, Chairman Aratos, Chief Kirk.
State of Chuk, Chairman Aratos. State of Pompe, Chairman Panuelo.
Differ to Vice Speaker Moses.
Vice Speaker Moses.
Yes.
State of Kosai, Chairman Welly. State of Yap, Chairman Orsman. Mrs. Speaker, three states for the four.
For that reason, CP number twenty dash two forty-nine CD two has passed Congress on second and final reading. So next bill, Kirk.
Mrs. Speaker, we have CP number twenty dash one fifty-one for second reading.
Okay, CP number.
CP number twenty dash one fifty-one. It's a bill for an act to amend Title fifty-two of the Code of the Federated States of Micronesia as annotated and as amended by adding a new section two-one-two to provide for eligibility for housing allowance for off-island recruits, for public eligibility for recruits for public service sector positions within the national government of the Federated States of Micronesia, and for other purposes.
Speaker. Chairman Romo.
Move for adoption of this said bill. That's second and final reading.
Second. It's move and seconded that Congress pass on second and final reading, CP number twenty dash one fifty-one. Discussion, and a discussion. If none, there is no objection. Discussion is closed, so let's vote by roll call of delegations.
State of Chuk, Chairman Aratos. State of Pompe, Chairman Panuelo.
Chairman Romolo has been a good neighbor, Speaker. So I whispered to him that I would be a good neighbor to him, so yes.
State of Kosai, Chairman Welly. State of Yap, Chairman Orsman. Mrs. Speaker, three states for the four.
CP number twenty dash one fifty-one has passed Congress on second and final reading. Next bill.
Mrs. Speaker, we have CP number twenty dash two hundred fifty-four for second reading. CP number two hundred fifty-four, which is a bill for an act to renumber the sections created by Public Law number twenty dash one thirty, and to clarify the source of the funds deposited into the FSM Trust Fund pursuant to the new section of Title fifty-four of the Code of the Federated States of Micronesia as annotated and as amended, and for other purposes.
Okay. Florida Harper.
Thank you again, Mr. Speaker. I move for passage of CP number twenty dash two-five-four on second and final reading.
Second. It's move and seconded that Congress pass on second and final reading, CP number twenty dash two fifty-four. Discussion. Chairman Panuelo. You have something to offer on?
This is two by four, Mr. Speaker.
Short recess, subject to call of the chair. Congress is back in session. We're still on discussion of CP number twenty dash two fifty-four. Chairman Panuelo, you have the floor.
Speaker, with the background that was explained during recess, on your behalf, I wish to offer floor amendment that's been written and distributed to CP number twenty dash two-five-four, offered by Wesley W. Semina. I so move for its adoption.
It's move and seconded that the offered for amendment to CB twenty dash two fifty-four be adopted. The relevant rules, specifically the one prohibiting substantive amendments on second and final reading are still suspended up to this point, so discussion. The, no, I think it's too sho, it's short enough for Chief Kirk to read it into the title. I mean, into the record.
Mrs. Speaker, we have a floor amendment to CP number twenty dash two fifty-four, offered by yourself. Item one of the amendment in the title, line one, delete the word "and" and insert a comma in lieu thereof. Item two in the title, line four, after the word "amended," insert the following, "to change the effective date of the transfer of fishing access fees into the FSM Trust Fund under Section one-two-two-three of Title fifty-five of the Code of the Federated States of Micronesia as annotated and as, I mean, as amended." Item three of the amendment on page two, line eight, delete two thousand eighteen and insert two thousand nineteen in lieu thereof.
Okay, there is that amendment, so discussion on it. Any discussion?
Mr. Speaker.
Vice Speaker Moses, yes?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I, I sort of, good morning to you and members and those who are observing. I, I think I grasped the reason for the, for the amendment. However, I thought we did make a commitment earlier in the session on committing the, that sort of revenue stream into our trust fund, and then now this amendment comes in to move it a year later. I'm just worried that we might be approaching the beginning of the next fiscal year, and then another amendment comes in that says twenty-twenty. So that's my concern. It seems as though after we made the commitment, we are now extending that commitment for another year, which is, to me, it's, we should have stuck with our amendment, and now I believe this is second reading for this one. So I just wanted to register my concern on the offered floor amendment. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you, Vice Speaker Moses. That's a very valid point. We have made that commitment, and with this Congress, that commitment will continue. Of course, we don't know what will happen with the twenty-first Congress, but for this twentieth Congress, that commitment is still there. The very reason for this will need to address our budgetary concern, whether we will run into a deficit if we do not address this. But it will remain. We can still appropriate independently of this if we come down the race of DFY eighteen, nineteen, and we see that we still have funding available under our FY. And by the time we reach this, our budget will be very clear. There will be no more question whether we will have deficit or not. But this time, because of the timing, we run into this, this problem of budgeting. Okay? So any further discussion?
Question.
Questions been called for? There is no objection. Discussion is closed on the offered amendments. Let's vote. Those in favor of adoption of the offer for amendments to CB twenty dash two fifty-four say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, no. Motion carried. The offered amendments are adopted. We have CT one. Any further discussion on CT one? Discussion. If none, there is no objection. Discussion is closed, so let's vote by roll call of delegations.
State of Chuk, Chairman Aratos. State of Pompe, Chairman Panuelo.
I defer to Chairman Perman.
Chairman Perman. State of Kosai, Chairman Welly. State of Yap, Chairman Orsman. Mrs. Speaker, three states for the four.
For that reason, CP number two, twenty dash two fifty-four CD one has passed Congress on second and final reading. Short recess. Congress is back in session. Next item, Chief Kirk.
Item nineteen, resolution calendar.
Speaker.
Speaker.
Motion to withdraw.
Chairman Perman, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Motion to withdraw twenty dash one forty, resolution calendar, and twenty dash one forty-one, and twenty dash one thirty-eight. So move, Mr. Speaker.
Second. It's move and seconded that the following resolutions be withdrawn from committee and placed on the resolution calendar for action, twenty dash one forty, twenty dash one forty-one, and twenty dash one thirty-eight. Those in favor of the motion say yes. Opposed, no. Motion carried. Those resolutions are now withdrawn and placed on the resolution calendar for action. Okay. First resolution, one thirty-eight. It's the same thing. They're placed the same time, so go with the lower one line up.
Mrs. Speaker, the first resolution is functional resolution number twenty dash one thirty-eight. It's a resolution for adoption.
Okay. Florida Harper.
Thank you, Mrs. Speaker. I move for the adoption of said resolution.
It's move and seconded that Congress adopt resolution number twenty dash one thirty-eight. Read the title, Chief Kirk.
Mrs. Speaker, functional resolution number twenty dash one thirty-eight is a resolution expressing the sincere gratitude and appreciation to Ms. Allison M. Levin for her dedicated service as staff attorney to the Congress of the Federated States of Micronesia.
Okay, there you have it. Discussion? Any discussion? Well, I appreciate the introduction of this resolution by our colleague, Chairman Figuerre. I guess I's very, you know, impressed and satisfied with the works of Ms. Levin that he wanted this resolution introduced. And I believe all of us join him in that observation. And it is our wish and standing invitation to Ms. Levin that anytime when she feels like assisting the FSM Congress, we would be very pleased to have her. Okay, any other discussion? Questions been called for? There is no objection? There is no objection, discussion is closed, so let's vote. Those in favor of the adoption of Congressional Resolution Number twenty dash one thirty-eight, say yes?
Yes.
Oppose, no. Motion carried, resolution is adopted. Next resolution.
Mrs. Speaker, we have Congressional Resolution Number twenty dash one forty for adoption, CR Number twenty dash one hundred forty. It's a resolution approving and accepting a grant in the amount of two hundred forty thousand dollars from the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services, Public Health Services, to support and fund the FSM Family Planning Program, including all the terms and conditions of the assistance.
So move for adoption, Speaker.
It's move and seconded, that Congress adopt Resolution Number twenty dash one four zero. Discussion. Any discussion? If none, there is no objection, discussion is closed. Let's vote. Those in favor of the adoption of Resolution Number twenty dash one forty, say yes? Oppose, no. Motion carried, Resolution Number twenty dash one forty is adopted by Congress. Next resolution.
Mrs. Speaker, we have Congressional Resolution Number twenty dash one forty-one for adoption. Congressional Resolution Number twenty dash one forty-one is a resolution authorizing the President to resubmit the nomination of Mr. Dolenzro Iwakok to serve as a member of the Board of Regents of the College of Micronesia FSM, representing the state of Koshai.
Chairman Orsman.
So move, Mr. Speaker.
Second. It's move and seconded, that Congress adopt Resolution Number twenty dash one forty-one. Discussion. Any discussion?
Mr. Speaker.
Vice Speaker Moses?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Do you? Resolution Number twenty dash one forty-one was introduced, with all due respect to the Chairman of E. I believe the person is very qualified. He possesses the necessary credentials to be a member of the Board of Regents of the College of Micronesia FSM, and the way Congress, the way this individual was not confirmed by Congress was due to, I feel, very unfortunate reasons, and I believe the, if President so wishes to resubmit this individual's name, I think between now and the special session, we'll give members of the committee, including the Chairman, time to work with members so that the outcome may differ from this session's outcome. So I ask members that we pass this resolution and hope that the President submits it before the next special session. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you, Vice Speaker Moses, for your comments. Floor Leader, Harper.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I just want to point out that this individual is one of the very few that are receiving or have obtained their PhD degrees, and I believe it would be very embarrassing if we don't, you know, approve this guy to be received on the Board of Regents for COI, and it would be also an embarrassment to this individual who has the IS degree as he receives his PhD, but this Congress only received him. Thank you.
Thank you, Floor Leader Harper, for pointing out some information that we probably didn't, some of us didn't have at the time. Okay, there is any, no further discussion on the resolution? If no objection, discussion is closed, so let's vote. Those in favor of the adoption of Resolution Number twenty dash one forty-one, say yes?
Yes.
Oppose, no. Motion carried, Resolution Number twenty dash one forty-one is adopted by Congress. Next resolution, Chief Perk.
There are none, Mrs. Speaker.
Speaker.
Yes, Chairman Orsman.
Yeah, it's a trouble, Mr. Speaker, I move to reconsider, for Congress to reconsider CR Number twenty dash one twenty-four. So move. So recess.
It's move and seconded, that we reconsider. Short recess. Congress back in session, restate your motion, Chairman Orsman, so we can keep track of it.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker, I move that Congress reconsider its action on CB, CR Number twenty dash one twenty-four.
Any second? It's move and seconded, that Congress reconsider its action on Resolution Number twenty dash one twenty-four, CD one. Discussion on the motion?
Mrs. Speaker. Has that resolution been transferred, been transmitted to the President's office or whoever gets the resolution?
Short recess subject to call of the chair. Back in session, this motion of reconsideration, not subject to debate, so let's vote. Those in favor of the reconsideration of our action on Resolution Number twenty dash one twenty-four, CD one, say yes? Oppose, nay. Motion carried, our action is now reconsidered, so we now have Resolution Number twenty dash one twenty-four, CD one. Chairman Orsman.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker, I move that CR Number twenty dash one twenty-four, CD one, be filed.
Short recess, subject to call of the chair. Congress back in session, restate your motion.
Thank you again, Mr. Speaker, I move that CR Number twenty dash one twenty-four, CD one, be recommitted to the Committee on Education.
It's move and seconded, that Resolution Number twenty dash one twenty-four, CD one, be recommitted to the Committee on Education. Those in favor of that motion, say yes? Oppose, no. Motion carried, we now have that resolution, CD one. One, twenty dash one twenty-four, CD one, recommitted to the Committee on Education. Next resolution, Chief Perk.
There is none, Mrs. Speaker.
Okay.
Mr. Speaker.
Introduction, next item, introduction of bills and resolutions.
Item twenty, introduction of bills and resolutions.
If you have any measure to introduce, give them to Chief Perk, next item, twenty-one.
Item twenty-one, miscellaneous communications on receipt of numbers twenty dash thirty-two through twenty dash thirty-four.
Okay, assign those, Chief Perk, next item is miscellaneous business. Any miscellaneous business?
Speaker.
Vice Speaker Moses, you have anything? Okay. Go ahead, Chairman Panuelo.
Speaker, under miscellaneous business, I wish to share some news, maybe some of you have picked it up, and this is a very important one for our citizens, just viewing C-SPAN, and now, as of Friday, I think some of you have picked up the news, we've been dealing with the issue of the Real IT Act in the United States, the House has passed, I think unanimously, the modification to that bill, and I think it's HR, they're saying it's HR, House, HR thirty-three ninety-eight, so it's unanimously passed, dealing with, with the temporary license by our citizens. This act, I believe it's sponsored by House of Representatives, Don Young, he's here from Alaska.
From Alaska.
Yeah, and then co-sponsored by Hannah Pousha. I picked this up, and maybe some of you have read it, but it still has to go through Senate and then signed by the President, but by the look of it, it's moving through the House of Representatives, and I think it's a positive one. I just want to share with those who have not read the news, most citizens who are applying for driver's license, even when I renewed my Washington driver's license, it became one year. So I hope that this, by this modification, they're talking about FSM, PALO, and RMI, when it all goes through the U.S. Congress and signed by the President, it's a technical modification, they call it, to restore citizens of the FAS countries to have full-time IT, such as driver's licenses, and would help with the issue of employment and economic opportunity in the U.S. So I know you've picked it up already, Speaker, but those citizens who are not catching this, I think it's an important move, and I hope that our embassies in the U.S., Washington, D.C., both embassies of our freely associated states are following this, and that we can topple the lobbying with, with the Senate, so that this can be passed also in the Senate and then become law when President of the United States signs. This is a very, one of the, one of the issues that our citizens have been complaining about, and I think this is a good news worth sharing. I hope that work will continue by our embassies, including citizens who are lobbying the respective, you know, leaders in the U.S., especially in Washington, D.C. at this time. Thank you, Speaker, I wish to share this.
Thank you, Chairman Panuelo, for that information, short recess. Congress back in session, we're still in the miscellaneous business. Any other miscellaneous business?
Speaker.
Yes, Floor Leader, Harper.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, just a very small miscellaneous business. I believe many of us have been really wondering as to the cause of the air nuking going down in the water of Chu, close to the airport. As of this morning, someone was on Facebook also saying that there is a Coast Guard ship or Navy ship in Chu trying to get down to the sinking plane to get what they call black box, the particular item that expert analyzed to find out the exact problem of the, of any troubled plane, so hopefully tomorrow or these very few days, we will be able to find out the real cause of the problem of the plane. Thank you.
Thank you, Floor Leader, Harper, I hope they do get those, the black box, the voice recorder, and whatever information they can, evidence they can get from that plane. Okay? Any other point of, I mean, miscellaneous business? If none, next item is announcement. We just go from right to left? Okay, Senator Net? Any announcement? Vice Speaker Moses? Chairman Perman?
Just like to thank the member who ordered lunch for today, thank you.
Okay, Senator Aritos? Chairman Romano? Chairman Panuelo?
No announcement, Speaker, thank you.
Senator Conman?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, no announcement.
Okay, Chairman Orsman?
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker, your Committee on Education is contemplating a oversight, an oversight hearing on Wednesday afternoon at one-thirty with the Department of, what you call that, Education, relating to issues that are pending with the committee, including a bill to authorize them to look at post-secondary and the issue about the, the invisible proposal for Pats and other issues that members can bring up for the meeting. I say contemplating for Wednesday at one-thirty, pending, I don't know how many of us are gonna run out of here after today. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you, Chairman Orsman, rest assured, no one is going to run away, everybody wants to wait for something. But take note, members of Education Committee of the hearing, one-thirty, oversight, Wednesday. Okay, floor, if you have any announcement in your usual motion?
Speaker, no announcement from this chair, but I'm just wondering as to when we will meet our, our staff who's coming from Chu. And Speaker, if no objection, I move that we stand in recess until ten AM tomorrow.
Second. It's move and seconded, that Congress stand in recess until tomorrow at ten in the morning. Those in favor of the motion, say yes? Oppose, no. Motion carried, we now stand in recess until tomorrow at ten in the morning.